Hi, welcome everyone. This is Lori Kowalski, Board President. I'd like to convene this workshop meeting and call the meeting to order and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Seinfeld, do you want to take?
I don't believe there are any comments or reports from the Board of Education, so I'll bring us into the workshop meeting. Thank you. So I'd like to thank all members of our learning community for your support and communication and smart questions and all of the hard work leading to our district reopening. We are so excited to welcome our students back to our schools next week. I also wanted to share with the Board of Education that of responses we received from families about whether their children will be attending in school or remotely, 85% of our students will be joining us in person and about 15% remote. So that tells me that our community really appreciates and supports the plan that we have in place and are looking forward to having their children join us in person. I also wanted to share with the Board and thank the community for the willingness to transport their own children to school, bringing down the density on the buses, which, as you know from the Board letter, approximately 32% of respondents indicated that they will take the bus, their children will take the bus in the morning, and about 40% in the afternoon. So that really helps us with the density and spreading children out appropriately. So we're very excited. We'll be, of course, as promised, assessing all aspects of this first phase of our return, and I'll be providing you with regular updates on how everybody is doing and any modifications that we may want to suggest. I don't know if there are any questions or comments from the Board about our comprehensive reopening plans.
Dr. Seinfeld, I'm sorry. I had one question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, this is Darren Jervosi. There seems to be a bit of confusion, and I'm not sure why, from the community of the first week of school after Labor Day. We understand there is an A/B day, and this is K through eight. What is happening when your child is not in school those days?
During the first four days of school, every child will have the opportunity to basically have a full two days of instruction. So those students who will be learning in school will attend school on alternate days. There will not be remote instruction for them on the alternate days. Those students who are remote, who have selected remote, will have the remote instruction on the Thursday and Friday.
Great, thank you.
And a few people have, we did send out a reminder, you're welcome, and I was able to clarify with that, and if anybody else has any questions specifically about that, they're welcome to speak to the building principal or to me directly. So, thank you.
Dr. Seinfeld, so can, I see that there's tents outside each one of the buildings, and this is going to be a great place to have kids come in, get their temperature checked, or mask breaks, or other uses of these tents. Will children be eating their lunch under the tent?
Right now, the children will be eating primarily in their classrooms with the desk guards, and the tents will be used for multiple purposes, including recess time as well as mask breaks, as you mentioned. So that is the protocol in place, at least for the first couple of weeks. All aspects of this will be reassessed certainly by the end of September so that we could make any recommendations for change. The tents have arrived. We have received a few positive comments from community members about that, and so we're thrilled to be able to have that outdoor space for multiple uses.
Right. And as far as seniors go, the protocol right now is for the seniors to stay in. Will there be an area for them to have lunch under a tent, or a senior's space?
Ms. Lasher and Mr. Leach are working closely with our students. They had actually a meeting yesterday to discuss this, and that will be communicated to them. And we're also considering ways to bring the students together virtually as well as in person, and of course, that we know that we want to bring more children back to the school as soon as we can.
Okay. And then, one last question. I know, like, particularly at our high school, a lot of our kids do not have a lunch period. So what accommodations are we going to make for them to be able to have lunch during the day?
Yes, that was discussed. They would need to eat in their classroom, as they have, and they'll be using their desk guards when they take off their face coverings, and just as they have in the past, no child will have, will not be able to have his or her lunch.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Seinfeld?
Yes.
This is Lori Kowalski. Can you explain how band and chorus will be taking place? Will they be under the tents?
Band and chorus will be following the Board of Educat, the Board of, the state guidelines in terms of the distancing. The groups are being rearranged for that purpose so that the 12-foot distancing that's required is in place. Right now, there is not a plan for that to take place under the tents because the tents are not to be used for specific instruction. So we have to follow the guidance there.
So in order for the tents to be used for specific instruction, we have to, I guess, file something with facility management, right? And by the time we got that approved, it's likely to be winter and way too cold to be under a tent because they're very temporary use. However, is, is there a possibility to order some more tents and allow maybe the kids to get outside and have lunch outside? Because, you know, just from my personal opinion, I think the walkthrough went great. I think the classrooms look great. I think the guards are very good, but once the kids have to take the mask off, to me, it would be, it might be nice if we can get them outside. I don't know how the other Board members feel. I know we're probably, it's only going to be maybe six weeks, but it might be a good idea.
No, it's a great suggestion, and we certainly want the children outside as much as possible. We know that the data is clear. The more that we're, that everyone is outside, the safer we all are. So we'll definitely follow up on that.
Thank you.
Mr. McAvoy, do you have a question?
So, next under the agenda, we held another meeting of the District Academic Committee. I believe a member of the District Academic Committee was going to provide an update for us.
Well, did you want to do the reopening first, or do you want to do the academic first? Reopening is first on the agenda.
That was what we just.
Oh, because I think Ms. Santos was going to give an update on everything that happened in the reopening committee? Did you have anything else to add? I don't know.
Anything else from the committee point of view, Ms. Santos?
No, I would just like to thank Mr. Cipriani for doing a great job in getting us those desk guards. I know we're a very fortunate district that we kind of had to pivot midway through because the original desk guards were not compliant with regulations that were put out most recently. And I think the desk guards are lightweight, they're effective. I think at the high school, the right decision was made that the kids won't have to carry them home on the buses, and that they'll pick up their desk guards every day, so people will not have to, to slept them back and forth and maybe forget them. You know, I think the classrooms, you know, the custodial staff has done a great job in ensuring that there's extra places to wash hands in Vernon, that there's plenty of dispensers for, for hand wash, and the, the protocols in place for the mask breaks are going to be very good. And the hope is that maybe we can get the kids outside a little bit more than we're used to, given the good weather we have right now. And I think, I think the schools are set. The entire Board of Education did a walkthrough recently, and we were very impressed with the readiness of our schools.
And then I have one other question about, about the bus passes. So we're staggering the entering of the school, right? For all these different kids. Do the bus passes reflect that staggering time, so that they are on the bus a little bit later?
The bus passes were printed without knowing the bus density?
Mm-hmm.
But, but yes, with reflecting the staggered arrival time. Is that correct, Mr. Cipriani?
Well, generally, it's the stagger, my impression would be that it may take longer for students to come off the bus, but it's still based on the arrival times at the buildings.
So I, we spoke to the transportation coordinator today, and some people may have timeframes on their bus passes that they are not aware of how long the actual bus ride will be, but the start time, for example, of Oyster Bay High School is going to be a little bit earlier. So anybody who may have a concern about how long it was, they'll be getting all of that information from Ms. Lasher with the, the correct start time. And the other thing that we spoke about today is, once we know exactly how long it takes with the lower ridership, those bus routes will hopefully be shorter, and families will receive revised information about what time their child should be at their bus stop or that will be picked up.
I have a question. For the parents that volunteer to bring their children to school, have they received confirmation of that, or have we received confirmation? In other words, besides the survey response, are they, did they receive something like, hey, thank you for volunteering?
We thanked everybody for their input. We shared that if, what, what information we had was what we were going with, and that there was nothing more that they needed to submit. And we also did share that if anybody did not respond, we assumed that they would be attending in person. And the buses are set for if those children who didn't respond would be taking the bus.
Thank you.
I had one question, Dr. Seinfeld. This is Darren Jervosi. So I'll use Vernon as an example. Four different entry points for the different grades, that keeps them very close to where their classroom is. I think it's a brilliant idea. My question is, obviously, there's a security risk of having four entry points open. Is there a point, so let's say I saw the last entry was till 9:00 a.m., do now all four shut down at 9:00 a.m., and then anyone who happened to be late or any other reason will come through the main entrance?
Absolutely. Once school is in session, anybody coming into a building only goes through the one entrance, which is, has a security officer at it.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and I also wanted to mention that at our high school, I think the one-way hallways and, and reducing the density between, you know, walking between classes was definitely a very good idea. I know a lot of thought went into that.
Yes.
And we're hoping that that's very effective.
Thank you. We are as well, and we're very pleased and thankful for the work of our, all of our team, including our building principals and putting all the protocols in place. So thank you.
Okay, the academic committee update, Mr. McAvoy?
Hi, this is John McAvoy. Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. I'm just going to give a brief update on the academic committee. We had our last meeting on August 17th. I was joined by Ms. Kowalski, Mrs. Castro Giovanni, Dr. Seinfeld, and Dr. Mulhall. Just to, just to give you a brief rundown of what we try to do on the committee, we are looking to improve our academic curriculum. We want to improve our academic performance overall and on tests like the AP, Regents and others. We want to improve our students' chances of getting into the college of their choice and improve the college recruitment of our students for academic, athletic, and other reasons. Bottom line, we want the family who values the best education for their children to choose our district and live in our great community. Besides academic measures, we are doing things like adding strings to our music program and Mandarin to our language program. So some of the topics at our last meeting, the digital remote learning starting this fall, the committee does agree that maximum real-time synchronous engagement is needed for effective digital learning and social well-being, but that was covered in the reentry plan. We next addressed state test participation, and we're going to try and get out a very simple message to our parents, and what we agreed on is that we're going to send out a couple of simple statements and then follow, you know, back it up with some details. One of the statements I came up with is that simply, students are required to take the state test, state assessment tests, and our district's ratings are harmed by high opt-out rates. And we're going to back that up with information, but that's truly the simple message the committee wants to get out. We next looked at some of the school ratings platforms, things like Niche, Grade Schools, U.S. News and World Report. And we're trying to improve our ratings standings in the long and short term. We do know that parents look at these, and especially, we're all hearing about families are moving out from Manhattan and the city, and they're looking at Oyster Bay and other districts, and these ratings are available, and they are reading them, and I've actually personally heard them refer to them. In one niche rating, Dr. Seinfeld advised that we improve to a one. So we're going to be working that for the rest of the year, and I want to thank Ms. Kowalski for really doing some, some good research on that as well. Overall, I find these meetings engaging and informative, and we're doing good work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McAvoy. Dr. Seinfeld, do you want to speak about diversity and equity?
Yes, so I wanted to share with the Board of Education that Dr. Mulhall and I have had the wonderful opportunity to work with a variety of members of our community to discuss topics, including diversity, equity, cultural proficiency, and I'd like us to, together, as a Board of Education and as an administrator, administration, to think about some next steps that we could do together to advance these goals. I also wanted to share with you that the School Boards Association has formed a committee entitled DIRE, D-I-R-E, dismantling institutional racism in education, and this committee has begun to explore topics that are critical in identifying the root causes of barriers to equitable educational outcomes for students, and to work to eliminate disproportionality in all aspects of public education. The committee, the group that, that Dr. Mulhall and I work with, had provided a number of suggestions and resources on social and cultural justice and cultural proficiency, as well as reading lists and strategies for diverse hiring. I wanted to share with you that there is a district diversity committee that will be a district-wide committee, co-chaired by two of our administrators, and I also wanted to share with you that part of the superintendent's conference days training over the next several days includes a required implicit bias training for staff at all three of our buildings. So I think this is really important work that we should keep very much on our agenda, and I'd be happy to report back to you on the work of the district committee in looking at areas including our curriculum and instruction.
Can you tell us who's on that committee?
The committee is being chaired by Dr. Valerie Vacchio, our principal at the Vernon School, and Ms. Rebecca Menutso, our assistant principal here at the high school, and we're looking to have a wide range of constituents represented, including and most importantly, students.
This is Nancy Castro Giovanni. Will there be any community members on that?
Absolutely, yes. We'd like a broad range to look at various aspects of this really important work. And I do thank the members of the committee who are community members, who have so steadfastly supported these goals and supplied us with the resources that are really, really helpful and thoughtful. So I thank you for your attention in this really critical and timely matter. I think the next is yours.
It's a superintendent search. So we've, we will be approving the hiring of a, from tonight, age 38. I know you've probably seen that she's started some surveys. We'd obviously love to have community input on the types of qualities that you all would like in a new superintendent. She has interviewed many of our administrators, Board members, and I know we may be looking for some more students to fill out the survey, so I would like to discuss maybe how we can get that done if we keep it open a little bit longer and have some of the, maybe one or two classes fill out the survey for us. And other than that, I mean, we're, we're on our way to look for a new superintendent.
It is bittersweet to hear this on the agenda, and I thank you for your support, and I'm excited to continue to be able to work with you through the end of this calendar year, so thank you. The Board of Education retreat, I wanted to remind everybody that next Wednesday, September 9th, we will be meeting here in Oyster Bay High School at 7:00 p.m. for the retreat. Please look at your packet this week for information about a light dinner to be provided and your selections. Ms. Kowalski and Ms. Sadowski and I have worked on an agenda for that, and I believe you've received some input from others on the Board that have influenced the agenda.
Yes, yes.
And we'll put that agenda, at least draft agenda, in this week's packet. Does the Board have a preference for meeting in this room or in the chorus room, or either one?
This one.
Okay, so we'll be here in the library.
Unless it's 100 degrees out.
If it's very hot and humid, we will, we will reconsider. So next on the agenda, if okay with you, Ms. Kowalski, is the turf field. So I'd just like to thank members of the Board of Education for joining us at our walkthrough. I'd like to thank Mr. Trentowski for his hard work and with, working with the contractors and of course with Mr. Cipriani all through the summer to see our beautiful new turf field, and we're so excited that it is near completion. And I know you saw it from the ground, but if you haven't already looked at Twitter, be sure you follow Mr. Trentowski, and you could see the aerial views taken by a drone from one of our recent alum. We did talk about briefly, and I, we said that we would put it on this agenda, the idea of having a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the turf field to welcome and to officially welcome that to our, our facilities. I did revisit the topic just before the meeting with our legal counsel. Right now, we are limited to 50 people at any event. So what I'm suggesting is that we look at, we, if the Board is interested in doing this, we wait until after this executive order expires, see what, if there is another executive order, and then, because I don't think we would want to have to limit it to 50 people. So I'm open to your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I agree. I will know how to operate.
Mr. Jervosi?
I mean, without sports, I'm not sure why we need a ribbon-cutting at this point, but, you know, I would rather do it right than, than do it halfway.
Mr. McAvoy?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a community resource. I think as many of us should be there as possible.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. McAvoy.
Yes, I do too. Okay, great.
All right, so we'll keep an eye on the executive orders as they come out of the governor's office, but I would, will be excited to bring the giant scissors over to the Vernon track, and, do you still have those, Mr. Cipriani?
I think they're somewhere in the break room.
Okay. The last time we used them was, was with Billy Joel, so thank you.
Do you have sports? I don't even know.
I just know that the Section 8 Athletic Committee is open to feedback and reassessing that before September 21st. I know that some people have reached out to me about my particular role. I think you know this, but just in case, I do not currently serve on that committee. I stepped down when I announced my retirement earlier in the summer, and so anybody who has given me feedback, I've offered to forward back to the current members of the committee. I do not have an update at this time.
So as, are we as the Board of Education going to stress how important the children should be playing sports at this point in time, or?
And is there a way, I mean, we could write a letter to Section 8 from the Board of Education?
Yeah.
I would support that. This is John McAvoy. I would support a letter trying to open up for sports.
Ms. Castro Giovanni?
Sure, I'd support it.
Yes. Mr. Jervosi?
I would support that as well.
Okay, so could we, let me ask you this. Could we have our clerk or someone draft a letter?
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to work with Ms. Nolan to send something to you as a draft.
Yep.
Yeah, if we could review a draft after we sent it out.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Okay. Next is the building walkthroughs, so I'd just like to thank Ms. Neinsling and Mr. Cipriani and all of our custodial and cleaning crews. They're amazing. I think you saw how, what great shape our buildings are in. I know Ms. Santos mentioned the desk guards, and you're able to see the way the desks and tables are spaced, and we're really just so excited about how it looks, and we can't wait to have students come back and sit in those seats next week. We did talk briefly about some possible future facility projects that we pointed out to you, and of course, we'll keep that in the conversation later on in the year when we talk about potential capital reserve projects and/or even a future bond down the road. I think that you saw the work that some of our own crew has done, including the cable wiring covers here at the high school. You would never know that they weren't part of the original building. So I thank you for your time at each of our schools and really appreciate your feedback on both our reopening plans as well as our facilities overall. I don't know if there was anything else on our walk.
No, we were so impressed. I mean, at how clean those schools are and what those principals have done and what the custodians have done, I think we were all really, really impressed with what the schools look like, and I think the students will be very happy to return to those schools.
Thank you.
Great.
And last but not least, I don't like to lose an item, so we did talk about the fact that right now we don't have another Board of Education member besides Mr. Jervosi, serving on the Wellness Committee. We know that Dr. Ross had stepped down from the Board of Education, so the question before you is, does somebody else want to serve on the committee, or do you want to wait at this point and just have Mr. Jervosi represent the Board at this time?
See, I mean, I know everyone here is already on committees, on two committees. Does anybody want to join the Wellness Committee? So I think Mr. Jervosi is going to be it for now.
I am comfortable handling it from here.
And perhaps when and if the Board decides to reconsider, you know, look at what to do with that open seat, perhaps there might be somebody down the road who would like to.
How busy is the Wellness Committee now? Is it?
The Wellness Committee meets during the school year, so Mr. Butler will be setting up the first meeting.
Okay.
Just a quick question. This is John McAvoy. When is the next Safety Committee meeting?
We have the next one on September 10th.
September?
Yes.
It's September 10th at 9:00 a.m., and it is a virtual meeting, so that should be on your calendar and Mr. Cronin's.
Thank you.
What's the commitment on the Wellness Committee? Like, how many times a week? Do, I mean, month, do you meet?
I believe it's quarterly, so about four times a year.
Oh, I could commit to that.
Ms. Santos joining another committee. Well, you know, the reen, it's a good idea.
The reentry.
Right.
Like, it would probably be a good transition, because there will be COVID-19 issues, so.
Okay, Mr. Jervosi and Ms. Santos for the Wellness Committee. So I believe that concludes the workshop section of the agenda. There are two items under Mr. Cipriani's report for the business and facilities. Ms. Kowalski?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. So I know in the packet there was a rendering of the scoreboard, and what I just need to know tonight is, if we could look at the wording that you like to have across the top, the logo in the middle, and then the wording below. So I'm just trying to get some consensus on what you'd like the scoreboard to look like.
The question is, do we want it to say James H. Vernon across the middle of it? Because the field is being used by all three schools. And is it, I think it's a bulldog, right?
Right, it's just the OB.
Okay, just OB, okay.
James H. Vernon Middle School, it should say James H., but I think that considering it's high school sports, you make a good point. Does anybody want to see a copy of this?
This is Nancy Castro Giovanni. That's what struck me when I saw it. I don't think it should have the James H. Vernon.
That's what hit me as well.
Okay.
Same thing, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, Ms. Castro Giovanni?
I'm sorry. I agree, that's what struck me when I saw it. I don't think we should have the James H. Vernon.
So should that just be blank altogether, or just say Oyster Bay? Well, it says Oyster Bay, East Norwich across the top. Can that section just be blank altogether? Would that make sense?
Our Baymen.
Bay people.
Baymen, Lady Baymen.
Well, we didn't want to say Baymen.
Home of the Baymen.
Well, what do we refer to ourselves now?
The Baymen and the Lady Baymen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, nothing?
That's complicated.
Nothing.
Nothing. So just blank there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Blank, can you summarize? So?
Everything looks fine, other than no James H. Vernon in the middle.
Okay, so we're doing the top the same, the logo in the middle, and just blank where it says James Vernon?
Yes, and maybe it could be sort of center, I don't know, I don't know if that would throw off the centering, but...
And I assume Mr. Cipriani, below in the white where it has Vernon with like a score of 21, that's not going to say Vernon.
Vernon versus Bears?
Yeah.
That's, they can program.
I think that's illustration only.
Yeah, anything that, below where it says Daktronics is programmable.
Okay. Is our, I know our OB logo is on there, but do we still use the logo of the man in the bay?
The Bayman, yes, we do.
Do we want that on there? I don't know.
I don't know where it should go, right? It would be so small in the middle that...
Yeah.
And it's not, it's round rather than oblong. I think it might look cleaner.
So to confirm, top the same, logo in the middle the same, blank where it says Vernon? We'll go with that.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
We're all okay with that?
Yes.
And Mr. Cipriani, the item related to arrival and dismissal here at the high school?
Yes, so Ms. Lasher had approached the town regarding arrival and dismissal to basically divert traffic on McCoon's Lane between 7:30 and 8:00 in the morning during school days and from about 1:45 to about 2:15, 2:30 in the afternoon. The reason is that the bus drop-off is probably going to be slower because students are going to be getting out, attempting to social distance, and we don't want cars coming down McCoon's Lane towards Main Street being stuck behind buses.
I just want to jump in that this is something that we've discussed through the District Safety Committee over the course of the years.
Correct.
And it was also supported by the building-level reentry committee.
Yes, and Ms. Lasher's had extensive discussions with the town on it. So basically, traffic coming down towards Main Street on McCoon's would have to turn on Agnes Street to exit the area during that limited time. Again, this would be 7:30 to 8:00 in the morning and 1:45 to about 2:15, 2:20 in the afternoon, and this would begin on the first day of school, September 8th. We would also have a security guard at Main Street and McCoon's on the other side, just to let the buses through and not have cars going through, going up McCoon's at that time. We think this would help with congestion, it would help with the ease of the flow of students in and out of the building at that time, and we just wanted to put that information out to the board.
In the afternoon, it would be about 2:15 to 2:45 right after.
Actually, 1:45 to about 2:30.
I don't think so.
Oh, was it? I'm sorry.
Mr. Cipriani, this is Nancy Castriavani. So, parents that are dropping their children off at school, because a lot of parents are committed to not using the bus, so where would they be dropping their children off? Because essentially, McCoon's is now closed?
Yeah, so there would be, and I'd confirm with Ms. Lasher, that some students would be coming in through the front of the building as well.
So parents would have to drop their children off on the front, the front of the school, not at McCoon's?
Yeah.
Because if you came down McCoon's, you would have to turn at Agnes, and we don't want people letting their kids off at Agnes.
Correct.
Walking on that corner.
Correct.
Drop off for children that are being driven by their parents will only be in the front of the school.
On Main Street, as has been.
Don't you think that's going to be really crowded? I mean, as opposed to just making McCoon's one-way rather than shutting it off?
Can you repeat that in a second?
Well, isn't it going to be really crowded in front of the school if everyone's coming in the front of the school to drop them off, rather than having, or maybe I misunderstood, you're talking about shutting down McCoon's Lane?
Yeah, basically, the traffic would be, yeah, would be for those, that period of time, yes.
Completely shut down.
Yeah.
And Ms. Cipriani, this is Mr. McAvoy. How would, how would the folks going down McCoon's Lane, traveling north, be alerted to that road closed?
So we'd have to put out some correspondence to the community, let them know that this is taking place during these hours, during these days, and communicate that.
This would be with just a barricade, not an actual one-way or shutting down. It wouldn't be a permanent structure, and this is something that the town would be helping with.
So there would be a barricade of some sort?
Yes.
Because currently, I think a lot of, or last year, a lot of parents dropped their kids off, come down McCoon's and drop their children off because the entry into the high school was through the gym lobby, right? So the front doors now will be open that they can...
Yes.
Because I think a fair amount of parents, myself included, did come down McCoon's and drop a child off so they could walk up the hill to the gym lobby.
But the gym lobby won't be open anymore for drop-off?
That's for the buses.
Yeah, for the buses.
Just for the buses.
Yeah.
So that's, so we talked about this on the reopening committee, and I thought we were closing the street to allow parents to drop kids off, not for buses.
That's what I would think, right.
I think it's going to be very problematic, because I think you're going to have way too much congestion on Main Street for kids getting dropped off. Because there's a ton of congestion now on Main Street, and it wasn't until we got security guards, thanks to Mr. McAvoy, that we got rid of the problem of people making U-turns and all the congestion over there. I think it's going to be worse, because we have way more parents dropping children off now than riding buses.
And why don't we just make it one-way on McCoon's? Because I think the real issue is when you have parents coming to drop off their kids on McCoon's, and other parents trying to turn around and go the opposite way, and that street's so narrow. But to, I mean, to reduce congestion, wouldn't you want them to be able to drop them off at both places?
The one-way conversation has happened over the years with the town, and we haven't been able to get that change.
But you think they'll agree?
We could try again. I believe one of the issues is that the buses are going to be there longer during the stagger time, so, yeah, exactly.
Because the problem is that the buses are at the side of the school with their stop sign out, the parents still coming up McCoon's if they were, can't pass the bus because the stop sign is out.
They can't pass the bus, right.
Is there any way to make the parking lot the upper parking lot, like a drop-off loop? I don't know how congested it is on a normal day, but is there any way to carve off a piece of it to make it like a Theater Roosevelt Loop in the morning, or a Vernon Loop in the morning?
The upper parking lot?
Yeah.
It doesn't lead to anything.
Yeah.
It's, usually it's somebody dropping off a child to walk down a few steps and...
Right.
I mean, I don't know, I'm just wondering if maybe we should pause on this and see how we do the first couple of weeks and see if we really need this, and then come back to it.
And what makes you think the town is going to agree to shutting, closing it completely?
I believe they have agreed to these barricades. It's not like it's a formal close sign, it's just diverting traffic for that short amount of time during arrival and dismissal.
Yeah, I mean, there's houses in between as well that would need to have access.
I think it only affects two houses.
Yeah, it would be Karen Court, and then we have a security guard who, if somebody had to come out and head up on McCoon's, could actually move the barrier if they had to.
It would still be good to have a security guard there if there's going to be more congestion because more parents are dropping off, and it would be good to only allow parents through. Like, this is like an official drop-off, like route.
That's really the goal, but you can't really block others from using the road.
Well, we could say between those hours, you know, it's for school drop-off.
And between those hours, it's typically our parents going that one direction there.
Correct, and we will have security.
Children coming the opposite direction, that usually causes a lot of congestion.
So, I don't know, my, based on your feedback, knowing the community, I'm thinking that we pause this, see how we do with traffic the first couple of weeks, and then reconsider it. That's the sense I'm getting from the board. Do you agree?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What are you going to do about East Main Street, all the drop-offs?
Well, there is a staggered arrival time, so that should help, but, and we also have the reduced density because of the A-Day, B-Day for grades nine through 12, and we have some students who will be learning remotely, and we're going to see, I mean, there's not much other real estate we could use. As you know, we're tight on space, and we'll see how we do. It's one of the main reasons we really wanted to ease in the first couple of days to see how arrival and dismissal work, temperature checking, et cetera, at all three schools, so.
Are we going to have security out front, though? I guess is really my question, like, directing traffic, like, I'm just imagining more cars, but maybe, given the A-Day, B-Day...
No, it's a great point, and there's actually additional security on tonight's agenda for your approval, so.
We've been interviewing and getting as many security guards as we can.
The personnel actions, or?
Yes, so thank you, and we'll revisit that.
Okay, personnel actions. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay, East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following professional personnel and civil service personnel resolutions as listed.
So moved.
And I'll note that Dr. Seinfeld's resignation is here, which is very sad.
Thank you.
A second? Any discussion?
How are we on monitors and...
Have that contact our building principals, or you could send their resignation directly to me, but as you can see, we have some principals, we also have some resignations, and the principals are working diligently on that.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Down to number six on page seven. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay, East Norwich Central School District hereby approves following business resolution as listed.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Goes down to page eight. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. Kowalski, I think that was just from a numeral six. I think you need a motion for special services, yes.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay, East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following special services resolution as listed. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business, resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay, East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following new business resolution as listed. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, the intermunicipal agreement, where are we at with that? That was to provide scope services for first responders? Was that the purpose of that particular agreement?
That's just through the end of the summer.
It's just through the end of the summer? Is that executive order expired?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We do need a brief executive session to...
Okay, do we need a motion adjourned?
To read adjourn.
Motion to read adjourn to exec.